Like this. There's my city email.
Yeah, that looks like my work. I have the new Outlook at work.
Yeah.
Well, I'm familiar with that.
So, what do you?
And now pretend to go to like, um, oh, I guess yours wouldn't do that on the other format. Like if I'm on one and I want to delete it, it will then, like, as you're reading the one before it.
Okay, see that one?
Yeah.
Gone.
And it doesn't open up the next one, which is nice. So pretend that was like a spammer, like a virus person, then you wouldn't be opening it if you didn't want to.
Good evening. It is 6:00 PM and I am going to call the city council meeting to order. Please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with roll call. Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Henderson?
Present.
Councilman Cox?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
Yes, and Councilman Lavaca, do you say that you are going?
Yeah, if I could do that right now. So I am going to be gone on the week of the 24th. And so I would petition you guys to give me an excuse to take that week off.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Any objection? Okay, moving forward to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
So I have a motion by Councilman Cox, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, items one through seven. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Cox. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. So, tonight we actually have a special guest. We have Danny Hagan with us. And Danny Hagan is part of the county, he's the county, Skagit County Assessor. And he is going to be presenting a presentation on property taxes and how they work in the state of Washington. And he has given this before. It's a great, it's a great presentation. But we were most impressed when we were out at first the senior center and then at the library, talking about the fire EMS levy and the taxes there. And Danny did a great job of explaining it and people seemed to really grasp how it all worked and it was very helpful. So Danny, I'd like to introduce you and thank you for coming, being here tonight and doing the presentation. I don't know if that mic is turned on or not. I know I turned it off.
Check, check.
There you go. Okay, I guess it looks like you have to talk fairly close to it, right? Okay.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for having me. I appreciate the time and the ability to speak to what is important to my office. I am Skagit County Assessor. I have been, a little about me, I've been employed by the Skagit County Assessor's Office since January of 2015. I'm an IWO professional member. IWO is the International Association of Assessment Officials. I'm the first person in Skagit County's office to achieve this, but not the last, as my chief deputy has recently also received her professional member designation. I'm a published author in IWO's Fair and Equity magazine and I have been a featured speaker twice at national conferences regarding different tools to achieve accurate property data. My father was the chief deputy assessor for Skagit County for quite a while, for Mark Leander, from 1994 until 2009. Since my mom had no interest in what my dad did for work, I was a lucky kid that got to learn what a bell curve was before most kids knew their multiplication tables. I want to talk about a few things today. First, why property tax is a good tax in context to other taxes. Secondly, how the state of Washington administers their property taxes. And finally, how that takes shape here in Cedar Wully. In the spring of 2020, right when COVID hit, I had the opportunity to read A Good Tax by Joan Youngman. I've never read a book or article in a field I felt fairly well-versed in and felt much more knowledgeable and spirited about the topic afterwards. Not only do I think this should be highly established reading among all people in the assessment field, but also any politician at any level of government dealing in taxpayer funds. I've never read an educational publication that was so interesting, informative and enlightening. After reading this 278-page publication, I ended up writing a 21-page report just to help me unpack what I had learned. This is a free-to-download PDF version of A Good Tax, so please reach out to me if you're interested. I'm sharing this because my thoughts about what makes property tax a good tax are not my own. They are that of Joan Youngman, who is extremely knowledgeable about the topic and she does a really good job of explaining these. So first, transparency. How much sales tax did you pay last year? How much federal income tax did your neighbor pay last year? If you know that answer, please don't raise your hand because that's probably illegal. One of the things that makes my job so difficult is how transparent property taxes are. Not only can everyone see what their assessed value is, they can see what their neighbor's assessed value is, and they can see the property data that we have collected to determine that assessed value. The transparency doesn't stop there. We also know where every single dollar of the property tax goes and which taxing district is accountable for those dollars, just like the city of Cedar Wully. Number two, local accountability. On the screen here, I took a screenshot of my good friend Tina Tate, who lives here in the city of Cedar Wully. This is her property tax bill. What you can notice about it is these are elected officials that are in charge of most of these services. You have the city of Cedar Wully, the Cedar Wully School District, the Hospital District, Skagit Conservation District. Other than the state levy, most of these, these are, these taxing districts are under local control. In the city of Cedar Wully, the last citywide race, your vote was one of 2,500. Compare that to the one of over 4 million votes for Washington State Governor or the even one in 75,000 votes for a state representative. When you're voting for the local jurisdictions here, your vote matters at a lot greater weight. This leads to accountability. Third, efficiency. Think of it logistically. When you don't have to ship tax dollars down to Olympia or over to Washington DC, there is more efficiency in how each, each dollar is used. Not to mention, the tax funds don't come backed with very strict requirements in how those funds are used. As city council members, I'm sure you're aware of, when you get grants or when you are given taxpayer funds to spend, they all have requirements. When you're a local taxing district dealing with your own revenue, you have the control and the local accountability behind that. Because property taxes levied locally, it can be spent in the exact way that local people see fit. Again, locally elected officials lead to better efficiency or they would get voted out. I haven't had to give a presentation in Burlington yet, so I continue to use this example. The Burlington Edison School Board bought a piece of property in the early 2000s that was a horrible investment. The school district has still not been able to pass a middle school levy since that, that ramification. And so when you want efficiency in tax dollars, having accountability for bad decisions is good. Washington State has a budget-based property tax system. When I mention that, it's, every state's property tax system has three key features. You have your assessed values, your levy rates, and your taxing district budgets. When it, when I refer to a budget-based system, that's because of the restrictions on this formula or on the taxing district's budget. In Washington State, there are very strict legal laws that determine what taxing districts can ask for for money. If, and there are some other states where you limit, you restrict the assessed value or you restrict the levy rate, and there's a lot of consequences for, for those options. I'm not going to get into a deep dive of that. What are the budget constraints on Washington State taxing districts? The first and most important is a 1% increase limit each year. So if a taxing district levied $10,000 last year, they will be allowed to levy $10,100 next year. And that is the limit they are allowed. They are also allowed new construction value. So when new real property is built inside a taxing district, whether that's a city or a fire district, there's more people or buildings that need those services. So you're allowed to also increase your, your budget, increase as much as your new construction value occurs. The only way around this is through a voter-based levy. And the city of Cedar Wully is a great example of what that looks like. You've now passed two levies and that's, that's when the city, the citizens of the city say, you know what? I trust the people that are administering the services that I rely on and they're asking us for, for more money and we think it's being used right. And they, they vote yes on that. It's, it's good when that works and when it doesn't work, it's, it's also good. You don't want more money going to, to taxing districts where the people in those taxing districts don't feel it's being used well. So it's a good, good system in that. The, the only caveat to Washington State's budget-based system is due to the McLeary decision, I don't want to give a history lesson on what that was all about. But the Washington State Legislature had to decide how to raise more money for state schools. And their idea was a rate-based tax for three years. So instead of a budget where they would only be allowed to increase their budget a little bit each year, they were at $2.70 per thousand. And as values increased, so did the money they received. This occurred from 2018 through 2021. And if anyone has any familiarity with real estate prices, they will understand that values skyrocketed during those times. And so I do empathize because people's property tax bills have increased considerably during that time and it was for the state school levy. I also sympathize for all the local taxing districts because they have not seen that increase that the, the people are paying in their property tax bills. Really quick, we will show TCA 0935 is the tax code area for the city of Cedar Wully. So everyone inside the city pays to the same taxing districts. This is a chart of how the assessed value, the total assessed value of that tax code area has gone up while the levy rate has, has moved around. And that's what we say, there's a legally allowed budget and then the levy rate is whatever it needs to be to calculate that. And in a perfect world, in a budget-based system, if your values go up 10%, your levy rate should go down about 9% to compensate for the increasing values. I'm kind of the, the data nerd and so charts are fine for me, but I think more people appreciate graphs. This is a graph of those same numbers. And in 2018, it was the first year of the state school levy and values went up 9.3% and the levy still went up. And people were furious and democracy kind of works sometimes. And they complained to all their state representatives. They called on the phone, like, hey, this property bill is too, property tax bill is too high. Like, all right, we'll fix it, we'll fix it. We got to run again next year. We'll fix it. So they, they changed it for one year. It was only a one-year fix, not a permanent fix, a one-year change where they reduced that, that year. So in 2019, most people in Skagit County had a reduced tax bill. And that was because it was really increased in 2018 and as values went up 12.4%, levy rates actually declined close to 25% that year. One-year fix. All those people get reelected. Boom. We have a 22% increase to a levy rate and an increasing property value. That is why tax, property tax bills locally have gone, I mean, not locally, statewide have gone up over the last four years at a much faster rate than before. It's not because values have gone up at that fast rate. It was because of this segment of the tax. That was, that's a big portion. I think we're, we're up to about a third of all of our property taxes are going to the state school levy. As you can see, in 2022 and 2023, we return to as values go up, a levy rate's going down. And that's the way a normal budget-based system should work. In conclusion, the Skagit County Assessor's Office calculates the market value of all non-exempt property on an annual basis. It is approximately 80,000 parcels each year. The taxing districts then calculate their legally allowed budgets, send it into our office. We verify that that budget is, is legally allowed. We then calculate the proper levy rate for all those taxing districts that's needed to collect that budget. And we actually just filled out our levy rate sheet for 2024 taxes today. So that's actually going to be on file with Skagit County Auditor as of tonight, I believe. So we know what are now our levy rates will be for 2024 taxes. Really quick, I want to talk about the Senior and Disabled Exemption Program. A mentor of mine, Rick Stewart, he's really knowledgeable about tax structures. He compares a state tax system to a three-legged stool. You have a property tax, a sales tax and an income tax. Has anyone tried to sit down on a two-legged stool? It's not very functional. Washington State has invented the third leg. It's called special taxes. It's gas taxes, it's sin taxes. It's all that to help pay for, for that not third leg. But when you don't have a state income tax and you retire, you get zero benefits. You're paying the same effective tax rate as your working neighbor when you don't have a state income tax. And so that is really hard on our seniors and that's why Washington State does have a senior taxes program for seniors and people with disability that meet an income threshold. That threshold was $42,800 last year. We've worked with the legislature to get that updated and closer to, to real, but still not quite far enough. But it is now 48,000 annually. That's what the number will be for the next three years. And then I expect it to be closer to 60,000 in that three-year time. So if you know of any seniors or veterans that are disabled that, that need help on their property tax bill and you think they're under this threshold, please have them contact my office. We would love to get everyone that's, can be in that program, in the, in the program. Last thing I will touch on, if you or someone you know feels their assessed value is higher than market value, that is by law what we are required to be at, is market value for assessed value. Please contact our office within 30 days of, of a change of value notice. We're not paid on commission. We don't get any benefits for, for higher values. It's still the same taxing budget. So if we're off, we want to hear about it. We want to get those things corrected. If you, if we feel that the assessed value is accurate and it is what market level is, we will go to the Board of Equalization, which is just regular taxpayers that then would decide. Thank you very much and then I'll open it up to questions.
All right, thank you, Danny. Are there questions for Danny? Go ahead.
Yeah, if I may. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Hagan. I appreciate you taking the time to explain this and, and give us a rundown. I really do appreciate that. I just had a couple of things. The AWC has an initiative to make property tax, like on page 62, we have a 1% increase year over year that we have to approve or disapprove. The AWC has an initiative to, to really kind of like stimulate everybody to aim for a 3% to 5% property tax that would be not voted on by the city or by the citizens, but by the council. Is that something that the, the assessment office is working with them to establish? Or, I mean, is that, doesn't seem quite right to have it go that much? Is that something they're working closely with you guys on?
That's a really good question. That, our Assessor's affiliate that I'm fairly active in, we try to stay out of whether things are good or bad, but we would, we would be there for the administration of it and how that would work. I think, so the reason we have a 1%, just a little history, the reason that 1% increase is the limit, it was a Tim Lyman, or Tim Iman law that got put in place in 2003, really to stunt the growth of local, local governments. That 1% increase actually didn't do very bad things for most of the 2018s because we had really low inflation. When you have high inflation and your, your cost of concrete and your cost of labor goes up 10%, and you're only getting a 1% increase to fill that, you're, you're having to get more efficient or to cut services or to ask for levies. And I think that's what we're really seeing from a lot of local districts. I think, so we don't have to keep going back to the drawing board. And I think a lot of Washington State Legislature is setting firm limits and then when something weird happens, you have to change it. Tying it to a CPI, to, to an inflation index and that each year you're allowed the max of what inflation is. And I think then during low inflation times, it'd be, be efficient. And high inflation times at least gives them a chance to keep up with inflation.
I understand that. It seems counterintuitive. If we have high inflation, the pinch is already on the citizen. So to increase taxes when we have high inflation. I was just wondering if they were working closely with the Assessor's Office to, as one of the parameters of making these decisions for that agenda to push forward. The other thing was over on slide, and it's 63, we look at the rate, levy rates, total assessed value from 2018 up to 2023. We're looking at Cedar Wully as a whole and then the rate change, but we're not looking necessarily at the value of that rate change. Can you explain a little bit more how that works on the dollar side for the average city resident?
Yeah, so, and I think I understand the question. If, if values go up 20%, the city of Cedar Wully still only gets to increase their budget 1%.
I, I, okay, yeah. I see what you're saying. I was thinking about the whole because I thought you were kind of explaining.
And that, and that is, that picture is the whole. The reason it hasn't switched is because the state school levy kept on getting bigger and bigger each year. So I, the assessors were not talked about at all during that fix. It's also, the legislature was really limited in what they, they don't have many levers. And so, but since 2022, it has been that budget-based where when assessed values go up at a close to 10%, your, your levy rate's going to go down that 7% or 8%. We, we, it's a little bit interesting because we split the city of Cedar Wully into two different market areas. We have south and north. And this last year, when we did our sales analysis, the north increased slightly and the south actually decreased slightly. And that's actually going to be a tiny bit of a shift of taxes from south to north inside the city. Again, that's very marginal and that only has to do with the portion of your sales taxes going to the city. And I think when we really look at a tax bill, when someone's paying property taxes, the, the part of that that's going to the city of Cedar Wully is, it'll probably be around 25%, like a quarter of it. And, and then I, I'm very pro-local government. I don't think you get much better bang for your buck than getting streets, safety, the ability to have a good job for, for what your property tax bill is. And I mean, what someone, what, what someone's paying on the city of Cedar Wully is less than they're paying their phone bill. And they get to call 911 anytime they need and, and there'll be really good service showing up. So that's something that I think is really cool.
No, it is awesome. There's other revenue that comes in alongside property tax. We can't say it's all property tax that gives them the right to call. But, so we, like we saw with your friend who had a property tax on that same page of 30,163. That was in 2023, but I wonder, like, I could just tell you from my personal experience. I bought a home. My property tax has doubled. My home value has doubled. But when I try and get to the bottom of it, I keep hearing that the rates go down, the rates go down. And talking to our finance director, it was, it was a situation where the state continues to collect theirs, but we're limited on what we end up getting. Can you touch a little bit more on, on that subject?
Yeah, and that was really that rate-based tax for three years. From 2018 to 2021, the state just started collecting $2.70 per thousand and, and as values skyrocketed. So that's, that's what happens when you have a rate-based tax. In state of Oregon, they have a $10 per thousand. If your assessed value goes up 50%, your tax bill is going to go up 50%. That doesn't lead to efficient government because if you're a school district or a fire district and you get a 20% increase in your budget, you don't, you haven't planned for that. You don't know where to spend that efficiently. You don't know where it's needed. Even, even worse, in a recession, if property values go down and we're just going to lay off 10% of our, our police officers because values go down 10%? The services that local taxes provide are still really necessary. And so that's why it is supposed to be a budget-based system. And unfortunately, if, if everyone's assessed values go down 10%, your tax bill isn't. It's still going to be a 1% increase. And I think you'll see in 2024, your property tax, because nothing else, well, you're in the city of Cedar Wully, so there is a levy. So that is going to have an effect on your, your actual property tax bill. But besides that, there won't be an increase to your property taxes, even if your assessed value had gone up.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your time. I won't take any monies from it. So, yeah, thanks for answering all of this.
Yeah, and any other questions, I'm always available.
Councilman Cox, do you have a question?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. So just, if I understand this, I guess I'm a little confused. Depending on who you listen to, the Federal Reserve is going to make two or three cuts in national, federal interest rates. So if that happens, is it, does that have any effect at all? Or are we just stuck with what the market is and assessed values and?
And, yeah, it is, it is going to be market value. And I think we saw when interest rates declined to the lowest in historical records, we saw values increase to historical records. And so we've already seen that. I think that wasn't as talked about when we saw values going up, was also the interest rates were getting really low.
Yeah, I remember that.
And so there was a driver to the increased values. So we, we, I will say this, we always follow behind a perceived market. And the reason is, when you get your change of value notice, it's around October. If you read the fine print, it'll say value of January 1st of that year. So the value we're saying, it's already 10 months late. For, it's not market value the day you're opening it. I, we do zero projections in our office. We are kind of historians of property value. And so to get to that January 1st assessed value, we look at all sales from May 1st, the prior year, through April 30th of, of that, the next year. And that's our 12-month sales window. We compare all those sales prices to what those houses are assessed for. And if those prices are 8% higher than what they're being assessed for, we, we have to raise those assessed values a little bit. I will say, it's kind of common knowledge, we're not at 100%, 100% of market value. If we were, half of the assessed values we set out would be over-assessed. We aim for right around 93% to 95% of market value. And we try and do that consistently across the board for, for fair and equity.
Okay. You want to, please go ahead. Councilman Diamond?
Can you just briefly touch on how the, the loss of timber revenue from DNR could be directly affecting our property taxes?
Yes. My chief deputy, Annette Devoe, is one of the best in the state. She would be able to speak to it better. But it's called TAV and it's Timber Assessed Value. And the state of Washington has, has deemed that timber is a vital, valuable resource. And so they want people to keep their land in production of timber. So if you're a commercial timber harvester, even if you're a private landowner and you have some acreage, you can put it into a timber program. And when you do that, you get a property tax benefit. You're not paying much property taxes while the trees are growing. You are going to pay a tax when you sell, when you harvest those trees and there's an excise tax. And so when you get, trees get harvested, there's an excise tax and that goes back to the taxing districts in lieu of the money they would have gotten for the timberland not being in that tax program. And so the, depending on which taxing district, city of Cedar Wully isn't going to lose, I don't think would lose much money because there's not a bunch of timberland inside the jurisdiction. The concrete school district relies heavily on, on timber values. And when, when there's things that get removed, it's, it's felt at a budget level. So it's kind of taxing district-specific. In Skagit County, timber is a major issue. Another big issue statewide and much more so in eastern Washington are these green energy projects. There are solar panels and windmills that are going in and, and they're assessed at a high value of new construction, so the taxing districts are increasing their budget. But because that property depreciates so quickly, that tax base disappears really quickly and it leads to a really high levy rate for these local residents. And so I'm not working on that problem, but that is something Commissioner Janik is on a, on a group to figure out how to fix that. So there are some issues with, it's kind of like a payment in lieu of taxes, which is the timber assessed value. But it, it historically has been fairly consistent. The, I know that sometimes DNR will cut off specific lands because of endangered species and those local taxing districts can be hit fairly hard.
Anyone else? Yes, yes. Councilman Burns?
Yeah, I was. You can go ahead.
Could you help me understand the, the rate versus growth? Let's say that houses stayed exactly the same value for a year or two. I know it's not normal, but to help simplify this. But we get 100 more houses in the city of Cedar Wully. How does that affect the levy rate for everyone else in the community?
The formula when new construction comes in is, it doesn't affect the rate. That is when a taxing district would get more money, but not charge the original residents. anymore. They would be charged the same amount, but then the, the new homes are kind of an additional revenue. If, and this would be great because it'd make my job really easy. If no values, commercial, residential, industrial, personal property, if none of that changed and Washington State Legislature didn't change any of their rules, your property tax bill, your, your assessed value would stay flat and your property tax bill would go up one percent each year.
For the, the actual levy amount that the city is collecting, does that then add to the amount that we were able to collect? I understand that we're collecting more, but as we calculate it moving forward, if we add a hundred dollars for this house, then that means that we now collect?
Moving forward.
Dollars moving forward.
Yes. So each year you have a new highest in lawful levy. And, and to calculate that, it's your last year's levy times your one percent if voted on. And we figure out the percentage of new construction value. So it's, in Skagit County, it generally ranges around two percent. It, it varies, Seidere Wully doing a little bit better growing than some other places. There's some rural taxing districts that really don't want any growth, but in general it adds another two percent. So that would be a three percent growth to your last year's budget that would be added and that's your new highest lawful levy and next year's calculations are based off of that number.
Thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, so this might have already partially been answered, but so we, we do, there are some new developments going in right now. And they're actually pretty high-dollar homes when you consider the rest of the median home price, if there were any homes to sell here. And so as, as those homes get built and as those neighborhoods get put in, historically more expensive homes in a municipality is going to be a driver for the rest of the market to go up. And so how do you guys calculate and factor that in where, you know, we have about a house worth about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on one end of town and then a brand-new development on the north end of town where the median house price is six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's a really good question and it's, it's what I enjoy about my job is figuring out how to do those things. When we adjust by neighborhood, that's a kind of a big lever. We also adjust by plat. And so kind of the, the plats that are going in inside the city of Seidere Wully, if we have those homes assessed at four hundred thousand and they're selling for six hundred and fifty, we're not going to raise up the rest of the neighborhood because we can see that these sales are consistent. Whether we have the wrong quality of home or, or some of our data isn't working accurately, we know it is, it is involved in this plat. So we will just adjust that plat separately. This last year, there were, we, we really didn't increase any neighborhoods more than ten percent unless you were waterfront. Kavanaugh, Fidalgo, Samish, they all had, so like fifteen, fifteen percent increases. But that didn't include, if you're in a specific plat, if, if it's a, a new housing development goes in, those are really easy for us to assess because all of them are the same. We, we have sales. We know what the sales price is and, and we hopefully have appraised them all consistently. So we would adjust that at the plat level. And it gets a little bit more difficult if you can think of like Old Town in Anacortes, where you're not building plats, you're, you're taking down an eight-hundred-square-foot old bungalow and putting in three-story modern-looking thing. We have to just be really good at appraising that home at that point. And that's where we do consistent training of our appraisers. We look at sales, we, we analyze them, see what we could be doing better. But no, those are, we do have tools to make sure that a, a sale in one area isn't going to affect the whole neighborhood if it's not actually going up at a whole market level.
Thanks.
All right, anybody else? Absolutely. Councilman Cox?
When I was doorbelling for election, I talked to a lot of people who were either seniors, primarily seniors, and the number one concern, I know that you don't have direct effect on this, was housing costs in this county. And the inability, for example, of their children to even afford to live in their, the same town they came up. But I, I am encouraged by that program you mentioned for seniors and veterans. And I would also encourage you to do what kind of marketing on that you can to let people know because I'm not sure it's widely known.
Yeah, you nailed on the head. That is a, it's a, it's a gold star program. It's one of the, it's a, it's a program that our office usually isn't giving good news to people. When they get into that program, they're usually seeing a reduction of forty to fifty percent of their property taxes, if not more. To benefits that program, not only do you get a direct reduction, but then your value freezes. And as long as you stay in that program, your assessed value doesn't go, go up. So we have people in the city of Seidere Wully that have been in the program since two thousand and one, who are paying forty percent lower of their property taxes, but their assessed value is at eighty-nine thousand dollars. And that's, that's good. We need, we don't want anyone to be taxed out of their homes. You, you also mentioned that other difficult part is you also don't want the, the price of housing to keep going up. When, when someone goes into the senior exemption program, that those local taxing districts aren't going to get less money. The shift just goes to the people that aren't in that exemption program. So for every senior that goes into the program, there is a little bit of a shift to the, the other non-exempt houses. And that increases rent. That's the one, I mean, rentals are, are a market that they, they usually aren't even voting for the things going on. They don't pay attention to their assessed value and they're, they're paying their property taxes through that rent very consistently. So it's, it's a balance. I'd love to exempt all seniors over sixty-five, but then the, the tax rate would double for everybody else. And, and we do have a lot of other parts of the population that are also really struggling to afford housing.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you again. This has been very informative and I think it's something that probably every citizen would probably appreciate too. I hope that there will be those that will have opportunity, if not to watch this on Zoom, to at least hear you give this presentation someplace else. It's really great information. Thank you, Danny.
You're very welcome.
Madam Mayor, one more thing is we do have that on our website. Thank you guys for doing that. But that's that senior housing application and a walkthrough of how to get that for anybody who's watching who, who just heard about that, so.
Yeah, and I just recently started partnering with Helping Hands Food Bank to start giving presentations about the senior exemption program. So we just did one at the Helping Hands Food Bank about a month ago. We're going to go up to Marble Mount hopefully in February. So I do want to do the promotion of that program just because if, and people might have heard about it ten years ago, they weren't allowed into it and they'll think they'll never be allowed. But we're working to get that income threshold to continue going up. So thank you very much for your time and I am available. If you ever have any questions, send me an email or give me a call and I'd happy answer those questions.
Thank you again. Okay, moving on to item G, the city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, counsel. Good evening. Just one item this evening I wanted to mention, we've got two director positions that are currently open for recruitment. One opened this week, the public works director position, and it's open until filled. And the other is the community development director position, which we relaunched just in the last day. So those are both out there. We're looking at interviews likely in February. Hopefully have candidates to bring to you late February, early March for confirmation. And we've got two council committees engaged in the interview process, planning and business development with the community development director, as we've been doing, and a public works committee joining us on the public works director recruitment. So just wanted to give counsel an update on that. If there are any questions, happy to take them.
All right, moving on. Councilman Lloyd, do you have a report?
I have nothing so far, but I do have one little comment that sure is strange being here. I wasn't planning on it.
We're glad to have you on board. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Councilwoman Diamond?
I just have a couple of things. First, Seidere Wully Little League registration is now open for two thousand twenty-four T-ball, baseball and softball season. You can register online. Also, in-person registration is at Cascade Middle School this Saturday from ten to twelve. I had three constituents actually talk to me a little bit about the online park survey, just some feedback there. All three people loved the fact that you were asking for community input. They were unhappy with the fact that they had to register and create an account on the platform in order to have their vote and their comments considered. So all three of them told me they actually filled everything out and then they abandoned it at the end. So, so that you're aware that that is happening. But they did want me to tell you, all three lived in different areas of town, but they do like the idea of having another park for kids and families north of Highway twenty. None of them had interest in a dog park and that was the extent of the conversations. One person did suggest that a dog park be included as green space in or around R seventeen developments, being that that's probably the more likely place that you would have animals that would need to be getting out more for something for consideration or possibly discussion for the planning commission. That most single-family phones, homes have access to a yard for their animals in that, in that respect. So that's just feedback that I received from that. And then I also received concerns from a couple of different constituents as well. They happy to see this, that the city is hiring, but not happy about the city coining itself as the fastest-growing city in Skagit County. Concerned that the city is growing too fast without the tax revenue and infrastructure to support it. So just passing on that information and feedback from constituents as it is my position to do so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
I just have two quick things, two separate complaints about the traffic and accidents on a township between Highway twenty and State Street. I don't have the exact figures on me, but I know there's been several parked cars that have been hit on that road in the last couple of weeks. One of them, I think, just got towed away and it was sitting out there for a couple of weeks. And then also a separate complaint on Jamison Street, same story. So people are looking to see if we can do something like put in, put in another stop sign, maybe at Ferry and Township for a three-way stop to slow the traffic down because it goes flying by. So that's all for me.
All right, thank you. Councilman Cox?
Thank you. I just had a constituent who had mentioned Carter Street was becoming a real dangerous situation with people cutting through. And he also said that bus traffic was coming through there. It kind of surprised me. That didn't seem like the right kind of street for bus traffic. And he said the speeding's pretty bad. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Yes, that makes three of us for traffic concerns from constituents. I have received a concern about railroad and Jamison for speeding. And then also spoke to a couple of people about vehicle prowling and vandalism that they were concerned about.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I actually got some on traffic as well, speeding in various wards throughout the community and just something to keep an eye out. I said I'd mentioned it in our meeting. It is supposed to be pretty cold out this weekend, colder than it has been. So obviously take special care on that. And I don't know if we have necessarily measures in place. Obviously we have the snowplows and things like that. And then with the park survey too, I heard that same thing. And it was that they got up to the survey, in fact, my wife was even one of them. And then once she had to log in, it was like, well, you know, I don't really want to give all my information. I just want to give them some feedback. So if there's a way we can make it possible, just feedback. And then people have an option for, for logging in, creating an account, maybe get some more features that way. That'd be great. On the website side, I haven't started any of the committees, but I hope to bring that back up before our IT and Finance Committee. I've gone through the website as it stands in, in lieu that it's newer, but it doesn't really have any of the features that we were really aiming to see. So interactive maps, more pictures, or even just more pictures for the parks or the parks in rec right up front. So I'd like to, I've heard something about that and I'd like to get that back before the committee. Thanks.
Thank you. So along the lines of your concern, Councilman Lavaca, I did give everybody a handout. It has to do with the cold weather shelters. And just in case you have constituents or they know of someone who needs a place to go, and I believe just about every city here is listed. On the other side is the seasonal winter shelters, but I thought that might be helpful for all of you to have. Also, just to make you aware, we're talking taxes and levies and whatnot. We do have, the Skagit County Board of Commissioners are going to be holding a public meeting on the EMS levy renewal. That's going to be happening January twenty-second at two P M. They're going to consider a resolution to put into place for emergency medical services levy renewal. And that will be on, you'll be voting, we'll be voting on that on April twenty-third. It's a special election ballot. So just so you know, that is, and I did include that too. You do have a hard copy of that. In addition, because you should have received in your email from Chief Wagner, a, it's a half sheet and it actually shows information about the levy itself. So that would be, that would be, I think, probably helpful as far as answering questions and especially when it comes to your constituents who may have concerns regarding that. So I wanted to bring those to your attention. And then just a couple of highlights, we actually on Saturday celebrated and thanked Jean Williams for her excellent library programs that she actually put together. They had grown exponentially under her leadership. She has been appointed to a new position with the state, still going to be with the library. We'll still see good things coming from Jean, not just for our library, but for all the libraries in the state of Washington. So we will, as she shared with all of you, going out for a new librarian. And I will be sitting on, on the board for that and I'm looking forward to that. And then also just wanted to make you aware that Goodwill is offering to some of the leaders, I'm, I'm going to be one of them, a hard hat tour tomorrow. They hope to open the end of February. It's very exciting to have them here in Seidere Wully. And they not only offer the services of their clothing and other equipment, household equipment, but they also have classes that they teach. And I'll be learning more about that tomorrow and be able to share that with you at a later date. Other than that, that is all I have for you tonight in my report. So I received a request. I did not know that January is National Blood Donor Month, but it is. And I received a request from a blood donor facility that is actually located in Everett, but they wanted this put out for all blood donors to encourage people to donate blood. The proclamation is called recognizing January is National Blood Donor Month. Whereas our nation is experiencing the worst blood shortage in over a decade, a local blood supply has hit emergency levels and it has not been stabilized. It threatens the availability to patients who may need blood transfusion. And whereas the month of January historically is a period of critical blood shortages and the center such as Blood Works Northwest, which is in Everett, continues to face decline in blood donor turnout during the holidays, with many donors falling ill during cold and flu season and not being able to donate. And whereas on December thirty-first, nineteen sixty-nine, President of the United States, Richard Nixon, signed a proclamation designating January as National Blood Donor Month. This observance is meant to honor voluntary blood donors and to encourage more people to give blood. And whereas the mission of Blood Works Northwest is to save lives through research, innovation, education and excellence in blood, medical and laboratory services in partnership with our community. As part of this mission, Blood Works Northwest supplies ninety-five percent of the Pacific Northwest blood. And whereas Blood Works Northwest supplies blood products to Providence, Peace Health, Virginia Mason Hospital Systems and more in the Northwest Washington region. And whereas Immaculate Heart of Mary Church regularly hosts Blood Work Northwest drives, most recently this week. I now therefore, Julia Johnson, Mayor of Seidere Wully, do proclaim January twenty twenty-four as National Blood Donor Month. And I encourage all residents to give back by donating, volunteering, or giving blood to locations offered in January, but also throughout twenty twenty-four. This life-saving work is vital to strengthening our community and its resilience. All right, thank you. Moving on to public comments, I will open up the mic right now for public comments. Please keep it to three minutes or less. And, and please give your name. You don't have to give an address, but your affiliation with Seidere Wully would be great. So is there anybody within the council chambers who would like to give a public comment? Yes, come forward, please. Yes. Yes, thank you. And you can just pull the mic down to...
Okay. So my name is Lisa Nagowski, and I live here in Seidra Wully on Puget and Northern Ave. I also have a traffic concern.
Hi, sorry to interrupt. Can you turn on the mic?
Oh.
It should be right at the...
Maybe.
Yeah, there you go.
Is that better?
Can you hear?
No. Do I have to, oh, there we go. Okay. So I live on Puget and Northern Ave on the corner. There's a crosswalk right next to my house. And the cars drive really fast down the road. Just Wednesday, December 20, my dog got out, and she got ran over, and it was a hit-and-run. I'm not going to cry, but I did call, and the lady left. She was elderly. She was probably freaking out. She probably didn't know what she hit, who she hit. She saw me kind of just, I was freaking out. My children were outside waiting for the bus at the time, so they saw the dog get ran over. And I just have concern that there's no stop sign from, I want to say Ferry Street to Highway 20, and the whole, I think it's one, two, three, four blocks is just one straight route. It's extra concerning because there are those yellow signs stating that there's a crosswalk right there, and the lady didn't yield or anything. I understand it was the holidays, maybe her brain was thinking about what she's going to cook for Christmas or whatever, but it could have been a kid. And the fact that that's that long of an open road, and there's no speed bumps or stop signs, and I did call, and I was not able to make a report. I wasn't not, I didn't get a call back from the police department either. It could have been a human error. They took down my phone number wrong. I don't believe I gave it to them incorrectly, but that's not, I don't, I'm not trying to get justice, or I'm just trying to raise awareness that that is another section in Seidra Wully that has a lot of high-speed traffic, and there are a lot of children on that road. Mine, I have four, including, and the neighbors, and animals always running the streets because they get out. But that's why I'm here. I just wanted to raise concern and see if maybe we can add more stop signs or speed bumps or whatever, and I didn't know a better way to go about this other than show up here.
No. Well, thank you for coming forward. Very sorry about your pat. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Anderson, and I live up on Beachley Road. And I just got back from Europe, and I wanted to come in and talk to the city council here and see if there might be any interest in the city forming a sister-city relationship with a town over in Europe. I don't have any formal information with me at this time. I just wanted to see if the initial interest might be there before putting together a more comprehensive information package about the idea.
I'd be happy to meet with you or talk with you about that, if you want to do that.
Excellent. I'll be, I'll be in touch.
I, let me see if I have a card that I can give you.
Super.
See, see if I do. I do not. I'm sorry, David.
It's okay.
But I am on the website, but I would love to talk with you about that. That would be great.
Sure. That sounds great. And I know that over at KSVR in Mount Vernon, we'd love to have more of you on the air to talk about what's going on here in Skagit. So definitely get in touch with Joe the next time you've got some events coming up.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hello. Bobby Castillo, live in Seidra, Seidra Wully. Since this is a hot topic of traffic, this is particularly close to me as well, because I have kids that run around, you know, skate park, whatnot, sports events, all over the place. I live next to the Cascade Trail, and constantly, 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 there is people flying up and down Township Street. And I know it's Township, Northern, you know, Puget, other places. I've talked to the chief, trying to get different police cars parked, you know, for speeding. We can only do so much, and I totally get it, but I would hate to see a kid get hit somewhere on that trail. My kid and tons of his other friends play, and going from middle school to different sports and whatnot, somebody's going to get hit and somebody's going to get killed. I think we should probably seriously look into trying to get some type of warning device for the trail runners, walkers, and just kids in general. I've witnessed probably, last year, I think, three accidents, just regular cars, but I don't know how many near misses on people walking, whether, A, you know, kids having their hoods over their heads and head down looking at their phones, or just people on their phones driving their cars. So I think the the speed is getting worse and worse around here, so I just thought I'd throw that out there and let everybody know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Freiberger. I see you did get a card of mine. I look forward to hearing from you. Perfect. Anyone else? All right. Is there anybody online who would like to make public comment? I do not see any hands raised. I have a screen up here in front of me, and I don't see anybody with hand raised. So with that, I'm going to close public comment, and we are going to move on to new business. We do not have any unfinished business at this time. The first item on the agenda tonight is Resolution 114124. It's a first read. It's the master fee schedule. Hi, Kelly.
Good evening. Am I on? Okay. So this is the first read. We are not recommending action tonight, but the attached schedule, excuse me, is our master fee schedule. We have revised the formatting quite a bit from the former schedule, hoping to make it a little bit easier for ourselves and our citizens to read. The major changes in the schedule, or all of the changes in the schedule are in red in the document. And just to summarize some of the major changes, the first one is the 2024 utility rates. This is just adding into the master fee schedule what the council has previously approved at the end of 2023. Also made adjustments to the flat fee for the facility monitor, adjustments to the Riverfront Park and Bingham RV Park fees, impact fees. We're working on public records request fees. That will be, we'll have more information on that in the in the second read. Our attorney is working on that for us as well. Also updated is Attachment A, the 2024 Transportation Improvement Fee Update, and Attachment B, Building Planning and Engineering Fee Schedules. We hope to bring this back for a second read next meeting, January 24.
All right. Are there any questions at all for Kelly?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
On that packet resolution, it does talk about the, let's see, resolution change on February 8, 2023. And so I was just wondering if we have that reference on there, but is there a way to reference the packet, which I was looking at that one, there are the red lines, but the packet of what the original price was to where the proposed price is? I think we had that in 2023. I just had a hard time locating that exact packet site.
We don't currently have that as we reformatted the document, but we can include in the next read the current rates as well.
If we can do that, and then I don't know how we make it to where when we write up a resolution, if we're making that change that we include, like if we had a previous packet where that had that discussion, then we can go back to that. And I'm pretty sure if we go back to the ones that are listed in here, like February 8, it does have some pretty good description, but I was just hoping that we can get that exact packet.
And the current master fee schedule is posted on our website, if anyone is interested.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you.
Next up is the collective bargaining agreement, Afsmi. Mr. Bush?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Okay, this item is, the city's got four, actually, four different bargaining units within the city. Afsmi is one of those bargaining units. They cover City Hall employees as well as Public Works employees, primarily field staff, and primarily support staff here at City Hall. We had an expiring agreement that was ending at the end of 2023. Tonight is kind of our last opportunity to avoid retro pay. If the council is able to take action on this agreement, it would cover 2024, 2025, and 2026. It was a productive negotiation with Afsmi. We entered into, for the first time at Afsmi's request, interest-based bargaining, which is where we blended the negotiation teams and really worked on issues collectively. Eddie Allen is in the back of the room there, as well as Bobby, and they were both a part of the Afsmi bargaining team. Appreciated working with them. We were able to do this agreement within budget. We've been talking with council all throughout the six-month process to keep you informed. And they did ratify the agreement last week, and so we are here to ask for the council's approval of the agreement so that we can move forward and continue our relationship with this bargaining unit. If you didn't do this, we would have to go back to the table and figure out where to go from here.
Right. Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this. All right. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Any questions or comments? We have been over this before. We've actually been in executive session and discussed some of this. If not, we are looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, authorize collective bargaining agreement for 2024, 2026 with the Afsmi bargaining unit.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Burns, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, and it is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the collective bargaining agreement, 2024, 2026, with Afsmi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Thank you, council. Moving on to item number three, it's amending the interlocal agreement with Skagit Public Utility District, the fire hydrant ownership and maintenance. And so again, Mr. Bush?
The second of three items this evening to finish the meeting out. So this particular item, Skagit PUD approached the city. There's a lot of history here, but essentially, we have an interlocal agreement with Skagit PUD where they took ownership of our fire hydrants in the city. Their preference was to do maintenance on those hydrants because they're connected to the water system that is their water system. Historically, the city's fire department was doing maintenance on those, and we had a budget for that, and it made a lot of sense for us to enter into this agreement in order to turn all of that work and that responsibility over to PUD. So that's what the council decided to do back in October of 2022. And as a part of that agreement, there would be a lot of work done by PUD, and they would bill the city up to $50,000 on the hydrants that they had assessed, all of the hydrants that we owned in the community. So they've gone through that process. They discovered one more hydrant that they feel needs full replacements, and they are within budget. In fact, they'll still be under the $50,000. But in order to make that happen, there are two things that need to be adjusted. One is, the work was to be done within the last calendar year, 2023, and they need a little more time to do this last one. And second, there's an amend, exhibit to the agreement, Exhibit B, that lists all the hydrants that we worked on, and this hydrant's not on that list until now. So what we're asking you to do is vote on essentially amending the contract to allow the work to be done over the next few months, and to add this particular hydrant to Exhibit B, we would still be under budget, and that would complete the process of bringing all the fire hydrants up to a certain standard for PUD as a part of the agreement to then fully take ownership of them. And then from here on out, all maintenance, all replacements, all PUD's financial responsibility.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
So only one question is, if they're not, if PUD doesn't keep everything up to standard, what's the city's recourse on that through our fire department?
Yeah. We would certainly enter into discussions with them about that as we started to see any kind of slippage or issues. And there's ongoing conversation, I know, between the fire department and PUD. In this particular case, they own, they would own the hydrants. They do own the hydrants as a result of the interlocal agreement. The real question here is just whether or not this additional hydrant gets worked on. There are termination clauses in interlocal agreements, but the termination would be tricky in this case, because they've taken ownership and they're taking the maintenance on. So that would be a city attorney question. Nikki, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that one.
Charlie, I'm looking for the termination clause in here. I think I would need to look further into this and come back to it because I'm not just quickly finding it in this 21-page agreement.
Don't worry. Thank you for looking, Nikki. So we can get back to you on that.
I'm sorry. Here, it's at the very end. You may terminate with five years' notice. Termination shall not result in the district's reconvenance of the fire suppression system to the cities. So the city can terminate, but the hydrants remain the property of the district.
Thank you, Nikki.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? Yes, Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just curious how it's going. I think they've gone through and replaced a number of those or serviced and repaired those, but what do you think, Chief?
I think it's a win-win for us all the way around. I think if you look back on the history of this, the city's been trying to get the PUD to do this. I think the furthest back was like 1958, I think, we tried this. And and really, historically, we have truly owned the fire hydrants. They own the water system. So as new developments, developments have been produced, the hydrants have been turned over to the actual city department, and then we have had the onus of maintaining them. So all of our folks have gone out for years, every year, to meet our Washington Survey and Ratings bureaus to keep our insurances down by testing these and putting meters on them and checking the pressures. And then when something breaks, we can't legally touch them or maintain them anyway because PUD won't allow it. So the relationship we've had for the 30 years I've been here has been phenomenal, except for the fact that when we need them fixed, we submit a claim, they come out and do it, and then we pay for it. This deal now will prevent us from having to touch all 500-plus of those hydrants each and every year to do these tests to meet our insurance needs, and they will cover the cost of these going forward. So the upfront of this, under $50,000, is a huge win for us now and in the future, and really doesn't change the relationships. And the the quality of work that these folks do as far as knowing the insides and outs of our water system and our hydrants is just a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, I agree. It seems like it would save a lot of time on man-hours for doing that, 500, however many hours it takes to go through and meter, and then cost of repair materials. So I was just curious to see if it was going good. We signed it in a few years ago, and, or two years ago, I think, so.
And it's one of the nice cogs, as far as our Washington Survey and Ratings bureaus, of what we need to do to maintain these and have a record of that. And with this contracts, it puts them in a place where they have to provide that to us and to the WSRB each and every rating that we have. So we're covered on all ends, start to finish, and they provide us with mapping and GPS coordinates and stuff that we can do overlays into our CAD system in our rigs and on our phones to be able to know where each and every one of these are at any given time, and they update us with any problems they have as they move forward. And the nice thing is, is in the past, Mark's crew, if we had something go wrong with one of the hydrants above ground that was an issue as maintenance, then poor Nathan and his crew would have to go out and fix the the concrete and the bollards and stuff to protect them. We don't have to do that anymore. And we just, we actually just had this come up two weeks ago behind the old bowling alley here, and one of the the folks with PUD was like, hey, this is what we want to do. We'll need you to come out and do the the bollards. And Nathan's like, uh, and I'm like, we don't own those anymore. And they're like, perfect, and they're fixing it. So, win-win.
Well, I'd like to put a motion forward to approve the amendment for the interlocal agreement with Skagit PUD.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, to amend the interlocal agreement with Skagit County Public Utility District and to allow the replacement of one of the additional fire hydrants. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to the last item. Thank you, Mr. Bush, the Community Development Grant, El Patron.
Yep. El Patron. This is, I think, number 11. We've got one more grant coming to you for sure that's come in, Old Mill Project LLC that'll come on the 24th. This particular grant... This particular grant you saw on consent at the last meeting, we pulled it off. There were some questions about sidewalk cafes and what was possible, and what if the city passed its new ordinance? How would that work with this particular project? I talked with Planning and Community Development with Nicole, our planner, and there is enough space on the sidewalk on Third to accommodate what they're proposing to do, and it could be approved under the current regulations or under the new regulations if they're approved by council. The new regulations would be better, in her words, than the current regulations for doing that, but either one could work. By the time, realistically, we'll have that before you again, I think, by the time they get to permitting on this project. So in all likelihood, it would go if you approve it before the new regulations, if you approve those. So this particular project, again, it's outdoor seating that kind of wraps around the western end of their building on Third, and it meets the criteria for the grant program. We've recommended approval, and it's a $10,000 request. And if you approve it, we'll work with them on the contracting process to get it implemented.
All right. Any more questions or concerns? Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Kestie. Go ahead, Councilwoman Kestie.
All right, so did they get back to you?
Thank you. I did ask them for more information. I did not hear back from them.
Okay.
Councilwoman Henderson, did you have a question?
That was my question.
All right. Councilwoman Diamond?
Yeah, I'm just wondering how, if, so this is on the, is it on the corner of Third and State?
Yeah, it's really on Third, just south of State.
Okay, so directly across from the Garage Cafe is where they're intending to put that. Okay. My thought was just the amount of traffic and sidewalk traffic, as well as vehicles that are coming through there and people crossing back and forth, and how that would affect their ability to move around.
Yeah, all stuff.
Around that place.
All stuff that's looked at in the permitting process, but at least according to Nicole, there's enough, there's like 10 feet of width there on the sidewalk, and you only need five feet of width, essentially, to meet our code.
So this grant is then in assumption that they would then apply for the permit and then be approved for the permit, so it's a double?
They have to get, yeah. If you're required, if a permit's required to implement your project, then that's a requirement. You absolutely have to get permits to do the project.
Okay. And what is the, what is the end date on the, when funds are available for them to use? I mean, if people are approved, if there are businesses that are approved to use this for these projects, based on my understanding, there's several businesses that haven't started or haven't done anything with it yet. What is the timeline in which they're supposed to start it?
We don't have a starting timeline, but they, we have an ending timeline. The contracts expire at the end of the calendar year this year, in the 24.
Okay, so if they, so then if they don't apply for it or fund it, then that money is then?
Still available.
Is still available.
For whatever the council would like to spend it on.
Okay, they just, they default?
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
It's as if the money never, it's as if it never happened, essentially. We do have a number of projects that have been just getting underway in terms of getting their contracts in place, and that's really picked up in recent days. So that's a good indicator that we'll have a bunch of projects going this spring, assuming they follow through from there.
Yes, Councilwoman Kestie?
I guess my problem with this is that we had asked them to clarify on some of the things that were not really stated, and because they didn't do that in following back up with us, I'm not for approving $10,000 if they can't even give us a response back.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I do like the idea of having outdoor seating. I've always liked the idea of having outdoor seating, especially around Lager Rodeo. And I think, I think it would be nice to see the outdoor seating outside. I like the idea of being able to traverse through town, and that's something that I've been really trying to, to move us along on, or inspire us, encourage us as a, as a community or a city with Lager Rodeo and various things, to get people during those events to hang out and then move to the other side of town, shop along the way, have fun, sit down, hang out, move back, check out the Lager Rodeo, and have a community event versus all huddling at one area with outside. So I'm in favor of definitely seeing outdoor seating around this place.
Yes, Councilman Burns?
I'd have to completely agree with Councilman Lavaca. I think this is good for the atmosphere downtown. It makes it more lively when people are out there chatting, having fun, recognizing that from a legal standpoint, if they didn't ask us for the grant, they could just get the permits from the city and pay for this and do it themselves. It's not like we're giving them some loophole to go around rules. They have to follow every regulation that's currently on the books that us and previous city councils have put in place to help regulate for safety purposes, as well as keeping the flow of pedestrian traffic orderly. So I understand that there's going to be times where that will be packed during the parade, but for the rest of the year, that's going to be a boom to their business, I would hope. And so I'm in favor of passing this. I think that if they don't respond to the city and write their contract, then they're not going to get the money. If they don't apply for the permits, they're not going to get the money. So, I mean, it's on them to follow through after filling out the application. I'm okay with the information that's there, knowing that we're going to end up with receipts by the time we're done.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So if we vote yes on this and earmark these funds, and they don't apply for the, for the permitting or anything, these funds are earmarked for El Patron until the end of this calendar year, right?
It would be.
So that...
Set aside for them until that point.
That'd be, that'd be a, I mean, they haven't gotten back to us yet. That'd be a placeholder for keeping these funds away from another business or a nonprofit as our $140,000 original dwindles to zero. It's January, and they'd be holding that money for 12 months. So I, I think we should table this until they get back to us and answer some questions based on kind of what, what their plan is, a little bit better than just a sketch. I can't tell if that's a see-through fence, if it's not. I walked, I actually drove by there yesterday. There were some cars parked out front. The bump, and they're just, you know, small sedans, and they're overhanging the sidewalk by, you know, two and a half feet. You take that 10 feet original, and that doesn't, that doesn't leave you five feet of walking room if they're going to punch out five feet from the side of their building. It just doesn't seem like a good plan to me. That's why I'd like some answers.
Any other comments? Or do we have a motion?
If I may, I think you...
I got one thing. Did somewhere along the line, have I heard that you're going to update the ordinance? I was in Anacortes the other day looking, and they've got those setups, and they look so much better than what Siedulley's had in the past. And if you don't upgrade those things to look good, you're kind of fighting a losing battle.
Yeah, there is an ordinance that's been before you once. It should come back for a second read soon for updating parklets as well as sidewalk cafes. So yes, there's an ordinance that'll be in front of council that should update that code.
If you have minimum standards so it looks good, it is good, and you'll accomplish what you're talking about, but if you don't upgrade, upgrade the ordinance, it's a long way to go.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Lavaca?
So as far as the grant funds go, all of the grant funds are held for the time period up until the end of the year. So the permit really has no effect on it. Everybody who we're giving the grant fund to is holding the funds. A lot of them have come in on napkin drawings as too. We're not expecting an engineering firm to step in and the clients or the customers or people applying for the grants to put forth some intense drawings when they're saying, I need help with my business. And so that's kind of where I am with that. I would like to see it go forward, and I would put a motion forward to vote it through.
Councilwoman Kestie?
I guess my last thought is, is less about, you know, the permitting, and it's more about someone that's applying for a $10,000 that we have that we're giving out. And if you're going to do that, and you're hungry for this, and you want this, you're going to reply back to us because you're eager to get that. And without that reply back, that doesn't show me that I'm going to hold this for somebody when someone else who might be hungry coming up. So that's why I'm not for that.
I could offer a quick alternative to council, just as a thought. While these, right now, the way we've done it, these, this money is basically set aside for the year for these folks, once it's approved. If they don't actually execute a contract, then it's technically not set aside for them. If the council would like to be fair to everybody, the thing to do would be, I could come and give you a report in a month or two or whenever you'd like, basically saying, these are the ones you've approved, and this is their contract status. It might do two things, give some extra initiative to those folks who, for whatever reason, haven't executed their contract yet. It's a pretty simple process. But also then allow you to look at those that haven't, that maybe we've, we give them another month or so. At that point, you could cut them off, and we could basically reallocate the funds. We just send them a note that basically says, we're going to reallocate these funds if we don't get your contract in place. So that's an alternative that you could look at, that I just wanted to make sure I got into the conversation.
Can I say something, Madam? Is there any damage to this project if some of the council members' concerns about not getting back, maybe you report in a few weeks and make another effort? Would that create any issues for them, or?
I have not had a lot of communication with them directly. I've not heard from them much, so I don't, I'm not aware that it would create any issues at this point, so.
Thank you.
So where would council like to go?
I'd like to put a motion forward to move it along.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns, to approve El Patron, City of Siedulley Community Development Grant in the amount of $10,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. So all four opposed, Councilwoman Kestie and Councilman Henderson. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Motion passes. All right, thank you. Thank you for the suggestion. I think that's a great suggestion.
I would add that's something we can still do regardless of this vote, so if anytime council wants to hear on that, we'll talk more and let me know, we'll make it happen.
I would like to see that. My vote yes was, in fact, due to the fact that we have previous businesses that were approved that haven't initiated theirs yet. I see all points being valid. And so that part of my question in all of this, when I had initially asked, was when they, when do they need to start their, you know, what kind of start dates do we have? Is, you know, because there may be some that don't get anything, may not be able to get it done or feasibly done, whether it's weather or holidays or whatever their situation is. But having an, an update on where we're at with all of it would be great, and if some of them choose to bow out, that would be great to know as well, whether there's additional funds open or whether we choose to cut it off at a specific point and allocate those funds elsewhere for projects throughout, whether it's different committees or whether it needs to be allocated somewhere else that would be more beneficial with our current status.
Yeah, my suggestion would be I could bring your report in like March. Might be good timing because we're going to have another one come through on the 24th, and assuming that gets approved, give them some time to get through the process of getting their contract in place. Got a few other folks we're trying to get through, and then we could have a check-in with you, basically say, here's the list, what do you think? And then have a policy discussion about where we want to go from here.
If I may, I believe Schaftner was mostly vegetation, and I believe that the double-barrel barbecue was, you know, a good 40% to 60% vegetation, so not the great time of year to be doing that, and that's why I would anticipate we'd see more action around April, May. It would be great to see that come alive in, in June and July for the Lager Rodeo, for the events to start happening, and to see new green life in town. But I would imagine some of those projects might be, depending on weather.
Yeah, I think a lot of them, you won't see action until the weather gets, gets better. I think that's, that's pretty accurate. But what I'm highlighting is those who haven't even agreed to a contract, those would be the ones that we would probably want to talk about at that point to say, you know, maybe this contract should go elsewhere in order to get something done this year.
I have to say, so you mentioned Schaftner's, that, that's one thing where I have seen great improvement, and also it's brought in more foot traffic. They actually have had to increase their seating just to accommodate that. So I think that this has really been a positive thing that the City of Siedulley and the City Council has done, is providing these opportunities for these, these businesses to invest in themselves and invest in the city itself. So thank you so much. All right, thank you. That is all we have for tonight. The next meetings, it's going to be two meetings, at 5 o'clock on January 24th, it's a Wednesday, is the strategic planning meeting, that's at 5:00 PM, and then the city council meeting will follow at 6:00. Be sure to check out the information, if you haven't already, on the strategic planning committee meeting that happened on December 6th, and also the Public Works Director Signing Authority Record.